We're just going to talk about the warrant articles. There's some changes, right? Matt, you going to tell us about those? Again, this isn't a public hearing on the budget of the warrant article. It's just updates from some changes made by the Board of Selectmen. I guess at a recent meeting that we're not aware of. Okay, Matt, what do you got?
So, in front of you, you have a set of the warrant articles dated January 2nd, 2019, in the bottom left-hand corner. This is a clean draft of the warrant articles as approved by the Board of Selectmen, both at last night's meeting and at prior meetings. But I'm going to quickly walk through the changes that are in here, incorporated into here, because I know that you've seen a prior edition of the articles. I just want to quickly review that. So, the first thing you'll notice on page one is that we've added this Articles 2 through 8. Obviously, there are certain warrant articles reserved for the planning board, so we've added those in here. And therefore, my belief is that the numbers included here for the subsequent warrant articles should be accurate moving throughout the warrant article process and delivery session process.
Okay.
So, I just want to note that. On, moving to page 3, this is where we jump into financial articles, starting with Article 11. The only modification here being that we added a statement saying that there's no tax impact, obviously. This is an enterprise for electrical funds, so we just want to make it clear there was no tax impact as a result of this project. Article 12, the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge Construction. This is an article that underwent significant modification. We modified the figures in here to be slightly more conservative and reflect the fact that in 2016, $140,000 were expended on this project specifically for engineering and design. But that the remaining balance of the project is 1.24 million, of which 80% will be paid for, we expect, at least 80% will be paid for by the state, and $992,000, leaving the remaining amount to be raised by taxation at $248,000. But also acknowledging the fact that in total, the project cost for this is $1.38 million. So, we've just really cleaned the numbers up there, made it a little more clear about what the history of the project is and what the remaining amount to be raised is, in addition to the state matching component of that. To town upgrades, Article 13, no modification here, with the exception of removal of some language that didn't belong. The language that we took out is that this is a two-year appropriation. Obviously, it's acknowledged that it's a two-year appropriation. It was actually in there two times. And this is, it was initially noted as the second year of a special warrant article. It is not the second year of a special warrant article. It's just a one-time appropriation with a multi-year clause. So, that's the only modification there.
I just got a quick question. It's the first time I've seen a two-year appropriation that I can recall of. So, does that mean next year, we're not going to have any other town road upgrades?
That is not the intent. The intent is actually to make it flexible so that in the event that there's a need to expend out of this money in 2019, in 2020, I'm sorry, that funds could be spent out of this 2019 appropriation in 2020. So, the funding would essentially be in effect for two years.
So, there's things on here that probably aren't going to get done in 2019, but would be done in 2020?
I think that question is probably best directed to Dave Ford, but I think it's built in more of a safety clause here, in case that some work does not get completed.
How much of that money? What is that money that you're projecting that will be in 2020, needed in 2020?
Hi, John. Dave Ford, Public Works Director. This year, we were left with maybe $75,000, $70,000 that wasn't completed. This year, we ran behind because of weather and other issues, so we have that encumbered with a purchase order with an engineer and with our contractor for paper. So, this, each, for the last 12 years, it's not been unusual to carry over money into the next year with a purchase order. We recently realized that this is the proper way to do it. So, I think that's why we're trying to do is get back into organization. We're not going to change anything. We anticipate spending all $100,000 next year, excuse me, in 2019. We don't want to carry anything over, but things happen sometimes, and sometimes we have to carry things over. Because like this year, snow came early, we were shut down, and we couldn't complete some of the projects. So, I think it just gives us the flexibility, but it's not something that we should cut this year's budget because we're not going to spend it. We intend on spending the money. So, I don't have any plan for carrying it over, but every year, something happens. And this just provides us that ability without having to, again, to be more in accordance with the rules, the DRA.
Do you anticipate the wording to be the same here on out?
Oh, yes. All, I think that's, you might see that language on some other warrant articles.
Do you have the history of how many, say, the last five years, how much you were unable to expend during the year that it was approved, and you had to carry the money over? Do you have that history?
I have the history, but not in my hand now. I can get that for you, John.
Do you have a rough idea of what it?
I think it varies year to year, but I think it's not unusual to be maybe, you know, as little as zero and maybe as much as 50,000, like this year was about maybe a little more than 50,000.
50,000?
Maybe.
50,000?
Yeah.
Okay. I recommend that you try and have that information, especially next year.
Okay. Next year.
So, everything that, everything you've done so far this year, that needs to be finished, there's money to do that on right now? All the projects you've done, the skim coating, there's money left over from 2018 to do those projects, finish those projects?
The money from 2018 we're carrying over
Yeah.
is for projects that didn't get completed in 2018.
Okay.
In 2019, we have a list of all the projects we plan on doing, their cost estimates, and some of those are engineering projects. We're engineering in 19 for construction and 20.
Okay.
So, and everything is estimates. Again, I do my best to do estimates. Sometimes costs come in high, sometimes costs come in low, sometimes we have problems, weather. So, a lot of things change. Again, this just gives you the flexibility, which allows us to keep projects moving.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I haven't.
Okay, good, John.
You have an estimate of the number of man-hours that the Highway Department is going to spend on this project?
I don't. I think we talked in general terms, but I haven't got down to specifically. This year, we are cutting back on major road construction, and we're going to be doing a lot of overlays from roads we did this in 2018. So, we only have one rebuild, and then we have some engineering projects, and we're going to be engineering and putting the project out to bid. So, for construction in 2020, we'll be having contractors do a lot of the big jobs, and we'll be doing the easy jobs.
You'll be doing what?
The easier ones, the overlays, where it just may need a few cover replaces versus the major work we've been doing the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Matt, go ahead.
Dave, you may want to stay, actually. So, the, moving on to the Article 14, this is the 2019 operating budget, no changes here. But then moving to Article 15, the dockside public restroom improvements, we've made a few modifications. We've actually modified the number to be appropriated from $145,000 to $150,000 based on a contract that has been signed. As a result, you'll also see a change here. We added the language which has been legally encumbered, because we have legally encumbered the $150,000 appropriation that was done in 2018 for this project. And if you have any questions about the change in the number, Dave is well aware of what the contract figures say, but that's the modification that we proposed here under Article 15. It's a $5,000 increase in the total project cost.
Excuse me. What's the, you got, the copy I have here, this has a line. I apparently don't have the right. So... Okay. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, Article 16, the effluent disposal pilot study. The modification here being that we've added in the language saying, "The following activities, engineering, permitting, pilot testing, and wetlands mitigation is required." In talking to Dave, it seemed appropriate to add some specific activities there to make it very clear what the study is actually covering as part of this 2019 proposed appropriation. So, that language has been added in there. Article 17, no changes. Article 18, no changes. Article 19, no changes. Article 20, the one modification here in a prior iteration, the narrative numbering there, where we actually spell out what the number is, actually indicated a $175,000 appropriation, but in fact, this is a $125,000 appropriation for the Capital Reserve Fund for the Waste Road Treatment Plant. Article 21, establishing dispatch Capital Reserve, no changes there. Article 22, modification here is that in our initial conversation, and I think I was actually at the meeting where we discussed this item, we had talked about the Kerry Beach parking lot and septic system specifically. In talking to Dave a little bit more there, we understand that those are just two elements of what may potentially be causing the problems that we're seeing in Winter Harbor, and particularly from Kerry Beach. So, we've actually removed that specific language from the title and called this the Kerry Beach Water Quality Study Project, essentially, to review really more comprehensively what factors may be contributing to the water quality issues and stormwater management issues that we're seeing there. Additionally, we have added specific language saying, "Studying, engineering, and permitting a solution to environmental concerns related to water quality at Kerry Beach." So, provide some specifics, but also broadening this outside of the parking lot and septic system that were indicated here before. Does that change make sense? Okay. Article 23, building maintenance Capital Reserve, no change. Article 24, the Abenaki Capital Reserve, no change there. Public Safety Building Capital Reserve, no change. Article 26, Water Quality Improvements. This was initially presented as a Capital Reserve Fund, what it was intended to be a one-time appropriation of $50,000. So, we've taken out the applicable language for this being a Capital Reserve Fund creation and contribution. Additionally, we've taken out consultants for design and permitting of BMPs. Because we've reduced this from the $75,000 that was originally discussed down to 50, we're removing that specific activity from the scope of the improvements that we're talking about. So, that modification has also been made. Article 27, ask-me contract, no change. Police Union Contract, no change there. Special Detail Fund, we did have one modification here to add in the language referencing Article 23. So, we reference Article 23 from the 2006 warrants, so we've added that in there. And we removed language that suggested that it was an amendment to that Article 23, when in fact, we just needed to reference it in this Article 29. Article 30, no changes. Oops, sorry.
We go back to the union contract. That wages, does that include the step bump? Is that the total amount of money for everything?
Yes, it does include the step.
Okay, I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I was cruising a bit there. Article 30, library to expend gift proceeds, no changes. Article 31 and 32, no changes there either. And any changes that were done, the Board of Selectmen did reauthorize and revote. So, the votes that you see in this document are current as of last night's meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Any questions on that, Matt? Can I take a motion to adjourn from the current meeting? Got a few minutes before the public hearing.
Don't worry, we have the minutes.
Want to do the minutes, Leanne, now, or?
Yes.
Do the minutes.
We have the 20 minutes.
Yeah. Okay, the minutes of December 13th. Need to do any changes? Okay, can I get a motion concerning the minutes of December 13th, 2018?
Move to accept.
And a second from anyone?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing that, and all those in favor of approving the minutes of December 13th, 2018, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Minutes of December 17th, 2018.
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
About midway down, I stated in that, in that meeting, I was formally petitioning the town manager to ensure that representatives from those agencies show up for all future meetings, because we had a problem this year with agencies that didn't show up.
Okay, I'll just add to that. I spoke with Ms. Klotz and Ms. Klotz today. She called me and apologized for not being present for the agency meetings. She wasn't aware of it, and that's New Hampshire Human Services. And I assured I didn't see a problem, because we've supported that group over previous years. They've always, they do a lot for the community, and they always are upfront with us on their costs, that she could expect the same support this year. She was very upset, very apologetic for missing the meeting, and she said, "You want me to come tonight?" And she was up in Conway, and I said, "No, we should be all set with it."
I guess my comment was to make sure that the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, whoever schedules these things, makes sure that notifications are out in time, and makes sure that these people show up for the meetings in the future.
Right, agreed. Yep. Okay. Any motions concerning the December 17th meeting?
Move to accept.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, are those in favor of approving the December 17th, 2018 minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. You all set? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn from this meeting until the opening of the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Seeing that, those who are in favor of adjourning until the opening of the public hearing meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good evening, everyone. It's January 3rd, 2018, and this is the public hearing for the 2019 Town of Wolfboro Budget. And I guess the first thing we do is start off with the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We've got a slide presentation that's going to go show where, hopefully, where your money's being spent for, hoped to be spent in 2019. I want to just take the opportunity to introduce some of the members and also the town personnel that have helped us over the past couple of months working on this budget for you folks. We've got Paul O'Brien, who's the Selectmen's representative, Chief Pinio, who's the acting town manager, Deb Zapka, that's our finance director. We've got Leanne, who's our secretary. And down at the end, we've got Bob Lohman, Bob O'Brien, Paul O'Holland, Steve Johnson, and John Burritt, and a few folks that haven't been around the town for the past 30 years. I'm John McDonald, and I'm this year's chairman. If you could just show excused being Tom Bell, and also the vice chairman, please, Bob Tupper, that's being excused tonight. And then we've got Brian Black. Brian, running silent and deep. That's my friend. I apologize for that, Brian. If we can just start the slides. As I said, we've been working on the budget since probably the first part of October. And the way the process goes, it starts off with the department heads, and then it goes to the town manager, and then to the Board of Selectmen, then eventually to us. And what I'll do, I'll read the warrant article as it currently stands, that you folks will see in March. And it's the 29th operating budget. "Should the town raise and appropriate as an operating budget not including appropriations for special warrant articles, and any of their appropriations voted separately, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session, for the purposes set forth herein totaling $27,893,391. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $26,856,570, which is same as last year's operating budget, where certain adjustments required by the previous action of the town or by law or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13-X and 16, to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. The estimated tax rate impact for 2019 is $5.88 per thousand versus valuation." Okay, the, at the beginning of the budget process, the Selectmen and Town Manager set some certain guidelines that they ask the town department heads to follow. The first one being discretionary budget totals limited to a targeted zero increase over the approved 2018 operating budget. Exceptions for this, contractual obligations, legal requirements, or the cost of collective bargaining agreements. Discretionary items include the cost of fuel, fuel oil, diesel fuel, and gasoline. This is how the budget started out for 2019. The department heads requested $28,411,642. Then it went to the town manager, and she nailed it down to $28,322,170. Then the budget went to the Board of Selectmen, and they came up with a figure of $28,313,074. And then the final budget that we came up with was $27,893,391. Some of the increases, there's some things that we can't control, and this is just some of the figures to give you an idea. The cost of salaries increased by 3.30%, or $208,037. Benefits as a whole increased by 4.6%, or $165,347 for this particular year. And of this total, the cost of health insurance coverage increased by 164%, or $31,256 for the year. The cost of dental insurance coverage decreased by 0.77%, or about $662. The cost for New Hampshire State Retirement increased 6.34%, or $58,167. The cost of workers' compensation decreased 13%, or $17,756. A lot of the salary increases were due to last year, when we all voted to give the employees certain raises, whether it be in the police and fire or the regular town employees. Any questions so far that we've gone through? Okay. Now, we'll go into a general government, and the first one is the Executive Department. You can see the breakdown for the salaries, cable channel, insurance, and the milford treatment. On the Executive Department, we had an increase of $1,941. In the Town Manager line, we had a decrease of $49,453. Zoning Board, an increase of $2,048. And the Planning Board, an increase of $337. If I could just stop there, I've received a request from the Wolfboro Heritage Commission to, asked for us to approve a total of $500 to the Planning Board for their particular use to do their, to complete their mission. And everyone have a copy of that? I'll just read it to the public here. "The Wolfboro Heritage Commission respects your request. $500 this year to support education and training expenses for our members and the alternates in the coming year. Since our formation and has not gone into town funding, we were not previously noticed of the timeline for submitting the budget request. Our request for funding in 2019 breakdowns as follows. Eight copies of preserving community character, a preservation planning handbook for New Hampshire, that's $25 each. Six registration for members to attend the statewide preservation conference in April in Concord, that's $50 each, for $300. And there's also an indication that the Board of Selectmen at their meeting on January 2nd unanimously approved this request. This is signed by Maggie Steele, the chairman of the Wolfboro Heritage Commission." So, they're requesting $500. Can anyone make a motion concerning that request? Any motion?
So moved.
And is there a second? Any questions for Maggie Steele? I believe she's here about what the folks do. I have a pretty good idea. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve $500 in the Planning Board line earmarked for the Wolfboro Heritage Commission. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Set with that, Deb? Okay. Okay, so that will now be an increase of 8337 plus 500, be 837 in the Planning Board. Okay, if we go over to the town clerk, we have a decrease of $24,876. Finance, we have an increase of $39,640. Assessing, there's an increase of $1,515. Tax collector, an increase of $8,396. Planning Department, an increase of $13,610. Brewster Building, we have a decrease of $2,146. Cemeteries, we have an increase of $25,982. Technology, we have an increase of $31,802. Any questions from anyone on the general government budgets? Okay, seeing that, we'll proceed to public safety. Police, we have an increase of $156,391. Fire Department, we have an increase of $58,644. Code Enforcement, an increase of $3,189. Emergency Management, $16. The Public Safety Building account is an increase of $1,953. Communications, an increase of $24,839. Any questions on the public safety budgets? Okay, let's move on to highways and streets. The Department of Public Works Administration, an increase of $57. Highways and streets, an increase of $56,970. Public Works Garage, an increase of $50,435. Public Works Buildings and Grounds, a decrease of $153. Now, we'll move into sanitation. Solid waste disposal, an increase of $10,493. Health officer, a decrease of $234. Animal control, an increase of $883. Agency, increase of $7,798. Welfare, an increase of $370. Now, we'll move into culture and recreation. Park administration, increase of $7,466. Park maintenance, an increase of $19,596. Beaches, an increase of $1,676. Abenaki, an increase of $16,507. Hockey rink, increase of $1,483. Programs, an increase of $10,679. Community center, an increase of $425. Now, we'll go into the library budget. We have an increase of $32,655. Patriotic purposes, an increase of $1,886. Libby Museum, an increase of $3,824. Clark House, an increase of $4,707. Conservation Commission, an increase of $1,481. Economic Development, a decrease of $414. Okay, that's it on the general budget for the departments. Any questions or concerns about what we've presented to you folks? Anybody have any questions? Suzanne. Can I just have you come up here, Suzanne, please? Thank you. I hate to do it, but...
Suzanne Ryan, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, John, to ask, but as a, more of an administrative question, if you could. When we have, you have the two columns to the right, which are your increases, decreases. You've got your department, your line item, your total.
Right.
It's always baffled me why we don't have the first column, which is proposed budget. The proposed, but you're only, you're not showing what the budget is for each category The proposed bu- but you're only, you're not showing what the budget is for each category. You're showing only the increases, decreases. So if there was a column preceding those two columns, whether it be, it's your budget, your budget committee, budget, total amounts, um, just add, on your computer, add another column.
So do you want something for the entire, like, the entire Department of Public Works Administration budget that shows everything?
Take, take, each one should really show the public. I mean, you all know because you have your budget books, but people don't know when they look at this handout, what this, the first column, I don't know if you want to do the board of selectmen, proposed budget, the town manager proposed budget and your proposed budget, but your budget is the one that gets voted by law. So it, it could say budget committee, proposed budget, after salaries, after cable, after insurance, after what that number is. And then your next column would be your increase and your next column be decrease, increase, decrease.
Okay.
I mean, it would be a nice reference for the public. Cause it's meaningless without that number, those numbers.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to show, especially if you look at DPW, that over the total budget, it's a fifty-seven increase, fifty-five, fifty-seven dollar increase. But we'll, we'll do that, something we can work on that maybe for next year. I don't know if we'll get it done this year or not, but... Okay, um, thank you Suzanne. Debt service. Uh, long-term principal is a decrease of fifteen thousand dollars. Long-term interest, a decrease of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Operating transfers out, transfer out to the sewer fund, a decrease of, uh, nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uh, capital outlay, a decrease of, uh, one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And then, uh, the next, I always call them slide, but I guess it's, should be a better name, this, the summary of the general fund increases. Uh, the overall increase in the general fund operating budget is four hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, a three point four one percent. Here are the factors why that's, why that's that much. Uh, salaries and wages are a hundred and eighty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars. Health insurance is forty-seven thousand, two eighty-one. Other benefits is an increase of fifty-one thousand, five sixty. Uh, capital expenses, a decrease of one thousand, two sixty-nine. Uh, basically, the, those top numbers are out of our control. We have no control over that. Uh, one of the ones that we do have control is the, uh, net increase of all other line items. So the total net increase that we actually have, that we can make a determination on whether to spend the money or not, is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, any questions about that? So again, the total increase is four sixty-nine thirty-two, but you have the breakdown of, uh, things that, like the salaries and wages, those are done by contract and agreement, the health insurance, all those things is something that's out of our control. Uh, if you look at the general fund budget increases over time, it goes back from, uh, two thousand and nine. Had a little over eight percent in two thousand and nine, then we were in the fours, the six, twos, ones. Uh, last year was a four point three percent. Uh, twenty seventeen was, was a decrease of point one six percent. And this year, it's, uh, we're looking at it, if it's approved, a three point four one percent, uh, increase in the, in the budget. Now we're going to the sewer enterprise fund, funded by fees, transfers and other revenue. Uh, sewer technology, it's an even. Sewer collections, uh, there's an increase of one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, sewer enterprise funds funded by fees, transfers and other revenue. Waste water treatment plant, an increase of, uh, five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Then we go to the water enterprise fund, uh, even on the water technology. Water distribution, we have a decrease of, uh, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Water treatment plant, an increase of, uh, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Capital outlay, an increase of ten thousand dollars. Then we get into the, uh, electric enterprise fund. Uh, we've got an increase of, uh, forty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Electric enterprise funded by fees and other revenue, uh, we have a increase of fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Electric generation, a decrease of, uh, ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Capital outlay, uh, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Electric technologies, uh, zero. Pop wellin enterprise fund, the ice drink, uh, an increase of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Uh, capital outlay, decrease of twelve thousand, five hundred. Then again, we'll just go through the, uh, overall budget increases for 2019. Uh, the general fund, again, it's four sixty-nine thirty-two, a three point four one percent. Uh, sewer enterprise is, uh, point four one percent. Water enterprise fund is point three eight percent. Electric enterprise fund is point seven six percent. Pop wellin, uh, enterprise fund is point eight two percent. Subtotal of enterprise funds is ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars for a point six seven percent increase. Total general enterprise funds is five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars, or a two point oh two percent increase from last year. So this is, uh, the estimated tax rate, uh, from our finance director. Uh, the approved tax rate for 2018 was five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, the estimated tax rate for 2019 is six dollars and seventy-nine cents. And that includes basing that tax rate on if all the warrant articles pass. That includes everything, the entire budget and also all the warrant articles if the voters turn to approve those. Uh, increase per thousand, the general fund is, uh, uh, point eight seven, eighty-seven cents. Warrant article portion is, uh, six cents. A total increase of, uh, excuse me, a negative six cents for a total increase of eighty-one cents. So how does that affect you as a homeowner? If you have a hundred thousand dollar home, your taxes will go up eighty-one dollars. You have a two hundred thousand dollar home, your taxes will go up a hundred and sixty-two dollars. And if you have a three hundred thousand dollar home, your taxes will increase two hundred and forty-three dollars. Again, that's with the budget passing and all the, all the warrant articles. Any questions from anyone in the audience on the 2019 proposed budget? Any comments, anything? Okay. Let's move on to the, uh, warrant articles. On these particular warrant articles, we're just going to deal with warrant articles that, uh, have a financial impact on, uh, on the residents of the town folks. We won't talk about anything that has nothing to do with money. Uh, what we'll do is I'll read the article and ask the public if they have any questions. And, uh, if it's a presentation by someone, they can come up for the department head to answer those questions, that'll be fine. And then at the end of the presentation, uh, we'll go through each warrant article and, uh, vote to either approve or not to, recommend or not recommend. Okay, the first one looks like it's gonna be, uh... Electrical distribution conversion phase, number five. I've been told that this is gonna remain as article eleven, uh, for future reference. Uh, new twelve point four seven KV substation and distribution conversion from four KV to twelve point four seven KV, Forest Road and North Main Street. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the electric enterprise fund for the purpose of constructing a new twelve point four seven KV substation at the former station, number one site, and converting the distribution system voltage from four KV to twelve point four seven KV on Forest Road, North Main Street and surrounding area. Feel that authorize issued itself three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in bonds and notes for this project in accordance with RSA thirty-three municipal finance act and to feel that authorize the board of selectmen to issue negotiate the rate of interest, maturity and other terms for this purpose. This project shall be paid entirely by surplus funds of the electrical enterprise fund and will not result in any increase in the tax rate or the electric rate. This appropriation, appropriation as rescinded shall not lapse until the fulfillment of this purpose of completion of the project being financed pursuant to RSA thirty-two colon seven three. Uh, again, there's no tax impact and this is recommended by the board of selectmen, uh, four to zero. Uh, any questions from the public on article eleven? Okay. Seeing then, we'll move on to, uh, article twelve, which is the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge Construction. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of one million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, of which eighty percent, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand will be reimbursed by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, New Hampshire DOT, as a state aid bridge project. For the purpose of engineering permitting and constructing the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge... I'm sorry?
Change the line.
Goodness gracious. Okay. Eighty percent, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand will be reimbursed by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation as a state aid bridge project. For the purpose of engineering permitting and constructing the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge, replacement project over Heath Brook. The amount to be raised by general taxation requested herein is two hundred and forty-eight thousand. The total project cost for this project is one million, three hundred and eighty thousand. One hundred and forty thousand dollars has been expended from the 2016 appropriation for preliminary design and engineering for the project. This appropriation should not lapse until the fulfillment of the purpose or completion of the project or at the end of the 2022 fiscal year, whichever occurs first. This has an estimated tax rate impact in 2019 of zero point one two five, uh, per one thousand assessment of the valuation. Uh, selectmen recommended this, uh, five to zero. Uh, any questions on article twelve? Okay, let's go to article thirteen, which is, uh, the town road upgrades. To see whether the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of eight hundred thousand for the purpose of upgrading town roads and the drainage systems. It is intended as a two-year appropriation, will lapse on December thirty-first, 2020, or when the project is complete, whichever occurs first. Any questions from the public on this one? Uh, I just have a quick question on the drainage systems. Are any of those drainage systems hooked up to the water or sewer system?
All our drainage systems that are tied to our roads are not connected to any sewer or water system.
There's no relationship to these with the water department or the sewer department. They're strictly drainage on the side of the road.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? David's up here.
Yes, do you have a listing of the roads that you, that you're gonna be doing on this?
Yes. Well, I wasn't, usually we, when I do the warrant article presentation, uh, at the cable TV in a town meeting, I'll present all those, but I could, uh, tell you what they are if you want, but I wasn't ready to, uh, hand that out tonight.
Well, my only concern here, a couple of concerns. Number one, you haven't informed us, maybe, maybe I missed it. What road, what, what roads is involved in this project?
I'll tell you...
Secondly, well, if, if you have that, I appreciate it. Do you have that information?
I have one copy of it. I wasn't, you know, at this stage, you know, I've been doing it twelve years. I didn't, I don't know what happened this year, why we didn't get the presentations out, but I, for some reason, they didn't get, get, at this stage, I, I don't know what happened.
Dave, if I may, John, if I may comment, I think those were distributed way back when. I got a copy from them from the CIP committee and I handed them out.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we gave them to the CIP committees, but we never made the presentation...
No, I understand that, but we have the documentation.
Okay, you do have it.
I've got it in my book.
Okay. So you do have it?
Yes.
The big concern I have here is if you, uh, find that you've done all the work...
Yes.
...and specified, you still have money that you may not, that you might extend it so you do the project to some other parts of the road. So you're gonna expend a, a total of eight hundred thousand dollars?
Absolutely. If we can do more roads than I propose, then I will do more roads, absolutely.
I don't like that. Thank you.
Okay. I, I, John, I, I'm not a magician. I can't explain, I can't have, I've got six or seven road project. I can't have every exact number down now. I can't tell for sure if it's gonna be over budget, under budget. I can't tell what the weather's gonna be, we're gonna hit ledge, we're gonna have more drainage problems, the cost of pavement goes up. Ah, all I can do is do the best I can. I've been doing it for twelve years and if you want to change it, I'll change it.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Just, uh, let me just clarify, just, if you can sit here, Dave, we got a thing, 2019 CIP project recommendations. And for annual road maintenance for the eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, if I can just read this, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, this year, the town rebuilt Allen Road and focused on overlays for roads that were rebuilt in 2018, including College Road, Trotting Track Road, Key Wade Road and North Wolfboro Road. Additional road work was completed on Pine Street and Atlanta Street. Waterline replaced in 2018, including some additional drainage and sidewalk on Pine Street and Partridge Drive. Survey engineering permitting work will be completed for Bright Road, uh, High Street and Park Avenue with the intent of construction occurring in 2020. Does that sound about right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. That's the one. Thank you, David. I'm sorry, Suzanne, did you have a question? Okay, thank you. Okay, so also on town road upgrades, uh, we've done the article fourteen, we've talked about the 2019 operating budget. Uh, article fifteen, which is the, uh, darkside public restroom improvements. Uh, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reconstruct and expand the public restrooms at darkside restroom facility to provide year-round Americans with Disability Act, ADA, accessible public restrooms at the darkside facility. This appropriation is in addition to the 2018 appropriation, article seventeen, for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which has been legally incumbent for this project. Total appropriations of three hundred thousand dollars. This is a non-lapsing article which result, which will last until the project is complete or until December thirty-first, 2024, whichever occurs first. Uh, the estimated tax rate impact in 2019 is zero point zero seven six per thousand assessed value. Uh, this is recommended by the board of selectmen, a vote of five to zero. Uh, article sixteen, to vote to see if the town will raise an appropriate sum of five hundred thousand dollars from the lawsuit settlement funds and the sewer enterprise fund for the purpose of completing NHDES administrative audit requirements, including the following activities. Engineering permitting, pilot testing and wetlands mitigation is required. This is a multi-year appropriation, is intended as a two-year appropriation, will lapse on December thirty-first, 2020, or when the project is completed, whichever occurs first. Uh, this has no tax impact. Recommended by the board of selectmen on a vote of five to zero. Any questions on article sixteen? Okay. Let's go to, uh, article seventeen, which is the Libby Museum feasibility study and final design. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of forty thousand dollars for the purpose of continuing to conduct a feasibility study on design options to best accommodate both the current Libby Museum collection and addition to it by improving and or expanding existing historic museum buildings. Continuing work towards final design and construction will include a survey, utility relocations, construction grade drawings, bid packages and bidding assistance, engineering and permitting the project for the construction. Said funds will be withdrawn from the 2018 Libby Museum Trust Funds, previously established from a gift to the Libby Museum from Betty James Rothrevocable Trust in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cent. Uh, this has no tax, tax impact and this is recommended by the board of selectmen on a vote of four to zero. Article eighteen, fire trucks and apparatus replacement capital reserve. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to be added to the existing fire trucks and apparatus replacement capital reserve to be under the custody of the trustee of the trust funds. The selectmen have been designated agents to expend this capital reserve account. Uh, estimated tax rate, uh, impact is for 2019 is zero point zero nine four per one thousand assessed valuation. Uh, recommended by the board of selectmen on a vote of four, four to zero. Chief, how's your fund looking for projected cost to buy the next new truck, which is gonna be a ladder truck or...
Yeah, so based on, uh, current expenditure, which is getting, is being prepared right now for the replacement of engine two, which should be delivered within the month, um, that's five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, the projection going forward, we've moved the price of the replacement of the aerial to nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And based on existing numbers, we'll have a balance and I, I wanna say it's around... it's around the $80,000 mark when that expenditure occurs.
After we buy the new ladder truck, aerial truck?
Yeah, after the replacement of the aerial based on an estimated cost of $975,000.
Okay. So if we stay at the $186,000, we should be all set for the next 20, 30 years?
I wouldn't say 20 to 30 years, but I would say it would certainly...
Will you give me 20? Will you give me 20, chief? Give me 20, please.
It will keep us afloat for a period of time. We're also in the process of looking with the public safety building design of potentially reconfiguring our fleet, which could have some cost-saving impacts. And those cost-saving impacts would absorb the increases of apparatus, which are becoming very significant.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Article 19, Public Works Vehicles Equipment Capital Reserve to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of $170,000 to be added to the existing public works vehicles and equipment capital reserve fund to be under the custody of the trustees of the trust fund. The Selectmen have been designated as agents to expend the capital reserve fund. Estimated tax impact 2019 is 0.086 per thousand. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of four to zero. Mr. Ford, how are you doing in your capital reserve for the future?
So we have, in 2019, we're looking for $170,000. We're planning on spending $175,000 for a replacement of SW-7, which is an older pickup truck that the Soloways has that can't pass inspection. That's, I think it's a 2002 GMC. And then HD-19, a front-end loader, which is a, I think, 1991... Excuse me. And it's very old. So we're replacing a loader and a thing. So at the end of next year, we'll have $97,000. But as we go forward, we will be looking at slight increases because the equipment is getting more expensive. And so we are going to be reassessing next year and looking at the escalation of cost prices. And we're also trying to extend the useful life of our vehicles. And this year, I made a decision about three, four years ago not to replace the grader, which was 20 years old. I said, maybe we can push it to 25. We put a lot of money into it this past year. It... Something happened bad. The rear end got to a point where we really couldn't drive it any longer. We had to look at it, we had to test it, and it wasn't decided not worth trying to fix again. We went out, we talked to the Selectmen. We actually bought a used grader for $80,000, net $80,000, because we did get traded on the old one, and a net $80,000. And we're hoping that's going to help us, get us through 10 more years, because that's our biggest piece of equipment. And so we are going to have to reevaluate, but I do... I can't guarantee, like the chief, we'll be looking at increases potentially going forward.
I know some of the folks that I've... That talk to me, they ask, they see the trucks, and they're just wondering, how come we've got bigger trucks now? We seem to have more 10-wheelers than the regular ones we used to have. What's the advantage of that, I guess?
That's a good question. We've increased the fleet, so we have two 10-wheelers. And 10-wheeler can carry much more sand, and they can... They have much more power. So for instance, we used to have to... You need the grader to push back. After you have a couple of snowstorms, you've got to push back the snowbanks. Well, the 10-wheelers can do that without the grader. So now the grader really don't need that for winter. They also haul more sand and salt, so they can finish their route without having to come back. So if you have an ice storm, they might not complete. So the 10-wheelers kind of go out into the back country. They have longer routes, and they don't have to come back as often. So it's really a cost-saving measure. Also, during construction season, the bigger trucks can haul more, so you're hauling more per man-hour. So it makes a lot of sense for construction. The other increase is we used to have the 1 tons. And we used to put the Ford 1 tons, we put a wing on them, because to plow, you've got to have a wing. They couldn't handle it. They would crack, the frames would crack. So we upgraded to what we have now, the Terrastars, which is a one-and-a-half ton. It's really a stronger-built truck. So with the wings now, so those look a little bigger. Technically, they're a class higher than the old 1 tons. And we have three of those.
Are those like F-450s or 550s?
Yeah, it's the next level up.
Okay.
And so that's why you see the bigger trucks. And then we still have the 6-wheelers also, so...
Any questions, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So I guess the question is, is the 170 going to keep you above water for a while?
It is for '19, but in '20, I was looking at increasing it by $5,000. But I think we need to do a detailed analysis, like what John said, we need to look at everything. Because what I've been doing is, we need to look at the replacement cost. Because after a while, I don't think about replacing a grader. We had a number in from a few years ago, but then you go back to, oh, wait a second. The prices are, you know, with technology and a different way these vehicles... And sometimes you wonder, too, you've got to be very careful. As we were looking at these used graders, some have a lot more technology, but they bring a lot more problems. And even on the fire trucks, we see that now, too. You've got to be very careful. And that's what you've got to buy.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Okay, Article 20, wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of $125,000 to be deposited in existing wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund under the custody of the trustee of the trust funds. The Board of Selectmen has been designated as the agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact 2019, 0.063 per 1,000 assessed value. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of four to zero. Article 21, Establish your dispatch equipment capital reserve fund to vote to see if the town will raise an appropriate the sum of $102,000 to establish a dispatch capital equipment capital reserve fund for the purpose of the replacement of the dispatch console or the related equipment, installation and related expenses. Said funds shall be under the custody of the trustees of the trust fund furthermore to authorize the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact in 2019 is 0.052 per 1,000 assessed value. And this is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of four to zero. Any questions on Article 21?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
A little clarification. I believe if I understand it correctly, this, upon the purchase of the dispatch console, which is some $200,000, some odd thousand dollars, this capital reserve fund will go away. Is that correct? And I believe that's 2022, if my memory serves correctly.
Can you repeat your question, please? Start anywhere.
Yeah. My question was that this is a... I'm going to call it a temporary capital reserve fund. It's not going to go on forever. You're going to purchase the dispatch console in 2022, I believe. Is that correct?
So I think the intent of this is to be able to purchase a new dispatch console and then drop it back to start planning for an eventual replacement, but it won't be at $102,000. It'll probably be something much less.
So it will go on beyond 2022?
It'll go on, but at a much decreased rate. We still want to be able to plan for the future, and these things are very, very expensive.
Any rough ideas to what it may be going forward after the purchase of this new console? Rough idea, just...
Yeah, sure, approximately 10 years, maybe a little bit longer. So we can drop the amount back, but I would definitely recommend funding a capital reserve. These consoles are very expensive. And the estimated replacement cost right now is about $350,000. So if you start saving up this money, you know, a little bit over a long period of time, it doesn't become such a sticker shock to the tax base. That's the intent.
I understand. And but so the capital reserve fund will exist at a lower level in years?
Much lower level, much lower level.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably four years. Four years, it'll go away. 2022.
Yeah, four years. Right.
That's when that's going to end, this capital reserve?
I believe that's right. I haven't seen... I think it's a four-year accrual, and when it's purchased, it goes away.
But what I'm hearing from the chief is that it's not going to go away. It's going to exist at a lower level. That's what I just heard.
2022? I don't know.
I guess what I'm wondering is, on some of these other ones, you've put a timeframe. If it's done by then or it ends. Is there some reason you guys didn't do that on this one?
So why don't we do this?
Excuse me, chief, I'm talking to the Selectmen's representative. On a lot of the other Warren Articles, you put a timeframe.
Yeah.
If it's not done by 2022 or whatever, it ends. Is there some reason you didn't do it for this particular one?
No.
No?
So if I could make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, chief.
Why don't we end this one at four years? And then we'll... Once this is... Four years is down the road, a while. We can have this discussion again in four years' time. My recommendation will be to establish capital reserve at a much lower rate. We don't have to continue this one. As long as we purchase the console, we should be set for approximately 10 years. But it would be my recommendation that you start saving for the future. But we can have that discussion in four years. We don't need to battle it out tonight.
Can we make a recommendation here, John?
Go ahead, ma'am.
So for a capital reserve, in order to close it, you'll have to take a vote at that time. So if this is for four years, and so the year before, however it lines up, you'll have to then vote to close it. So the decision to whether to close that or to continue it at a smaller amount would actually be done later.
Can we add a final line that says, like the other ones, if this shall lapse or expire on 2022?
Yeah, that's fine.
No.
May I? Just a thought process here. This could potentially be tied in to the replacement of the public safety building, meaning that when the public safety building, if that's replaced, we could be on a bubble of... The vote goes through for the public safety building. It's approved, but we may not be able to expend the funds for this dispatch console. And I think that was kind of the intent as well, was to tie this into the replacement of the public safety building, so we absorb some of that impact. If we... If the public safety building is being... Not passing, then we're going to have to do something about the console anyhow. But the thought process, I would think, would be to tie it in with the replacement of that building. Am I correct in that?
Yeah. You're correct to a point. The last point is what I'm concerned about. I don't know if we'll be able to get the public safety building to pass in four years. And then the question is, what happens when the console... Not if, but when the console fails within that four-year period of time? So I go back to the original question on deck, which is, you want to end it in four years or 2022? That's fine. You can do that. I think we need, as a town, we need to have a discussion about planning for the future once we get the new console, whenever that may be. If that's next year, if that's in 2022, or even 2023, if we can eke out another year beyond that. We need to have a definite conversation about how are we going to replace the one we've just purchased? And we need to start saving up for that, even if it's something as innocuous as $10,000 or $20,000, just so we have that money on hand. Yes, sir.
I understand from our discussions before on this one that this console could be put in, replacing what we have. And then if we have new building, then it could go into the new building without any problem. This is what I understood.
That's correct. You have to... Yes.
I think the discussion on setting up in the future discussion, that discussion must not have it at this time.
I agree with that.
Okay. Phil, I feel that there ought to be a limitation here, either time limitation or dollar limitation.
2022 is fine. You want it to go away at the end of four years? That's fine.
When do you need it, though, chief? That's the whole question. Do you need it next year, two years, or when? When's it got to be?
We're planning on 2022.
No matter if you have any new building or not?
We're planning on 2022 unless we have a catastrophic failure.
Okay.
When was the last time we had this update? About 15 years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's about right. Yeah, that's, that's about right. 2003, 2004 came online.
Thank you.
Is this question already answered? If the, uh, this 102 figure, if this is, if we're using a target date of somewhere around 2022, what is the actual cost of this equipment gonna be?
That, it, it's in your book. You, you've got the material. It's, it's in your book.
So next year, we're probably gonna see the same amount, possibly, assuming?
Yeah, I think there might be a slight increase, uh, but you've got all the material. It's in your book.
Okay, we're all set on 21? Okay, Article 22, Cary Beach Water Quality Study.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. To see whether the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $50,000 for the purpose of studying engineering and permitting a solution to environmental concerns related to water quality at Cary Beach, this shall be a non-lapsing one article and will not lapse until the project is complete or until December 2031st, 2024, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax impact in 2019 is 0.025 per 1,000. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Okay, Article 23, Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $50,000 to be deposited in the existing Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, previously established for the purpose of making needed repairs and performing needed maintenance to the town building facilities. Said fund is under the control of the trustee of the trust funds. The selectmen have been designated as agents to expend funds in this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax impact 2019 is 0.025 per 1,000 of assessed value. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of four to zero.
Have a question?
Yes, sir.
Is there any target, uh, amount of money that you want to have in your back pocket for this? How much we got in there now?
Or is it Chief, if you knew that?
Okay, what I have is, in 2016, was the first year, we had 30,000. 2017, it was 50,000. In 2018, it was 75,000. So we've put into the fund 155,000. That probably has what we spent on it. We had a lot of expenditures at the dockside. We spent some money on Town Hall, uh, but there should be a significant amount. And, uh, this year, we're proposing the 50,000. Your answer is what, what? We were supposed to get the asset management plan complete, which would then list out all the repairs, roof repairs, air conditioning, whatever it was, over a long period of time, identify all those costs, and then say, okay, we need to stop putting aside, like you did, I don't know, 30, 40 years ago, for the Public Works Department. So the intent was to do that. Unfortunately, uh, that was one of the projects that did not get done in 2018. And, um, we are, but it's still not, doesn't make it a bad idea. And we still are dealing with crises with buildings. We never know when something's gonna break. So I think it's still a good idea to keep putting the money aside. Uh, this year, I'd like to get that detailed asset management plan done, so it would give you what you're looking for. At this point, we do not have that.
Okay, thank you. I'm not gonna vote for it because we don't have a number.
I understand.
Thank you. I'm just letting you know now.
Any other questions, Mr. Ford?
Thank you, David. Okay, Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $16,750 to be added to the Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund, previously established for the purpose of purchasing, repairing, snowmaking equipment to the groomer, light poles, and mechanical, electrical, and safety equipment related to the Abenaki Ski Area. Said fund is under the custody of the trustee of the trust funds. The selectmen have been designated as agents to expend the funds in this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact 2019 is 0.008 per 1,000 of assessed value. This is recommended by the selectmen by a vote of four to zero. Christine, how's your capital reserve fund doing?
Um, it is, it is pretty good right now. Our next big expense is a groomer replacement that we thought we were going to have to do, um, last year. We held off to this year. We do have a groomer fix in the process that we're gonna use this money for, so it should last our groomer three to five years. Um, I think I have about seven...
Seventy. Seventy-three, $248.
What?
Seventy-three thousand, 248 before the repair.
Right.
And how much was the repair?
Eleven thousand, 552 dollars.
Plus maintenance? Plus annual maintenance? Is that coming out of that?
No.
It's not coming out of that?
This is for the groomer?
Yes.
So how, how far would that extend, the purchase of a new one?
Um, three to five years.
You'll have a sufficient amount of money at this funding to, to do that?
We're in the process of looking, um, just researching to see where we are. We're not planning on buying a new groomer. It's a used one. And we're looking at the possibility of trade-in purchase, working with friends of Abenaki and other bigger ski areas to see what we can get.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have questions for Christine? Thanks, Christine.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Article 25, Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000 to be placed in the Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund, previously established in 2001 for the purpose of acquisition of property, architectural engineering fees, rehabilitation of property, construction, reconstruction of property related to public safety buildings. Estimated tax rate impact 2019 is 0.010 per 1,000 of assessed value. Board of Selectmen, uh, recommended and vote by four to zero.
How much money is in that, that cap reserve?
Forty-three thousand and forty-eight dollars.
Say again, please?
Forty-three thousand and forty-eight dollars.
Thank you.
What are some of the recent expenditures that have been used out of that?
That'd take me a minute.
Okay.
I, I can tell you that, um, we did pull in a consultant to conduct the space needs assessment that, um, was completed this summer. Uh, that was in the ballpark of 60-ish thousand, I believe. And the SLR board approved that, um, under the direction of David Owen. And it really brought together a good first step based on looking at the existing site.
But it didn't cover any other site? You didn't look at anything else?
No, that's the goal going forward in 2019, is to evaluate some potential other sites.
Is that gonna be like another 60,000, do you think, or?
If I remember correctly, I wanna say the number was about 40 to conduct, um, that was the estimate we received from the same engineering firm.
Would that be it, you think, on the?
For this year, yeah. I mean, I, I don't know what the next process is.
Okay.
After that, um, there's, there's still a lot more evaluation.
A question?
Yes, sir.
According to the warrant article, it says this was previously established in 2001, so this reserve fund has been in, in existence since 2001?
That's correct.
Has it been at the same level since 2001?
I can, uh, I don't know the last time that funds were put into that account. But I, I can sit here and tell you that we recognize that there was funds available, and that's what prompted us to initiate that study. Uh, I don't know when the last time funds were put into the account.
When was the last time? So in other words, if I'm looking at 17 years at $20,000, it should have been $340,000. But we have no idea how much money has been, been put in, when it was put in, since 2001? Nothing?
I don't think they've been putting 20,000 in every year.
Well, we apparently don't know when the last time we put anything in there.
Yeah. I can, I can sit here and tell you, through at least my knowledge to this point, Deputy Chief Zodi would bring this up each year at the CIP process to start putting funds into this account, and it, it never made the muster. So... We can certainly research and get a breakdown of what the account looked like and how it got to the point it was.
Chief, you can do us, us on the CIP committee a big favor. If you and Matt maybe get together and establish what the levels need to be so we can do some projections.
We, we can certainly work on that.
I think the whole thing's kinda got lost in the shuffle. It appears that that's what's happened.
Yeah, and I, frankly, I think part of what happened is, it may have been forgotten that this account even existed.
That's what I'm saying. It got lost in the shuffle.
Okay.
We can certainly work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, we all set on that one there? Okay. Article 26, Water Quality Improvements. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $50,000 for the purpose of providing matching funds for the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Service Section, 319 Watershed Assistance Grants for Winter Harbor, a Section 319 grant for Lake Wentworth Watershed, and for watershed education and water quality testing. Estimated tax rate impact 2019 is 0.025 per 1,000 of assessed evaluation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen on a vote of five to zero. I just got, I guess, Mr. Ford, I think this is your expertise again. I should have asked this earlier. This Article 20, Cary Beach Water Quality Study. It says, Concerns related to water quality at Cary Beach. There's no chance we could put those two together and get matching funds from Department of Environmental Services to do the whole project? If that has something to do with water quality, or?
Um, this is interesting. We, I proposed originally, uh, one project, and it was split up to three projects. So we have, in road money, we have $50,000 to install best management practices on Pottery Drive to help mitigate runoff and sediment into the lake. That's one that we've identified. We're trying to get a grant. I remember we had a grant. We never got the grant.
Right.
We had the design done. So, uh, selectmen agreed to fund that this year, but in the road money. And then, uh, we broke out these two issues. We had the early one, Cary Beach, was a very specific project. We said, we know this problem there. We know we've had beach, uh, warnings, closures, and we had the cyanobacteria this year. So I think everyone got very excited about, we gotta do something now. We know there's specific problems there. So we had a, a specific warrant article for that. This is the more general one, in which the, uh, water selectmen have formed a, a committee to look at these water, water quality issues. Uh, we're having our second meeting on Monday, and we will be looking at, um, these, uh, for this specific, now it's more general. So we wanna say, okay, right now, we know we have a project for Lake Wentworth, and we wanna have, we have a $15,000 match, uh, for that grant. That's a BMP. Tuffton Borough has gone forward, and they have a watershed study going on for Winter Harbor. And, um, we are jumping in on that, and we're gonna donate 15,000 so we can do a more detailed analysis of Winter Harbor in Wolfborough. And then we are looking at $10,000 for education. I think we need to do a better job of educating all the people who live within these watersheds that what they're doing is having a direct impact on the quality of the water in the lake. And for my presentation, I'll have pictures and go through all this and show what we're talking about. And then we're also, um, looking at testing and sampling. The committee, uh, we think we've, we were a little bit late in responding to the outbreak we had this year. Uh, we count on the state, the New Hampshire DES, uh, to come out, take a look at, do the testing. Uh, we have a really great concerned citizen, Warren Muir, who's a retired scientist who lives on the lake, and he's been, he's the one that found it, and he's on our committee. So we think it's also important for the town to be proactive, to be able to take samples, to identify, and to make sure we alert the public. I think this year, we probably, uh, could have been a little bit more cautious and, and closed the beach when we saw that cyanobacteria. It's a significant issue. Um, it's one that we wish it wasn't here, but I think the selectmen agree, and we decided to do three separate warrant articles versus one big one.
So is there any chance we can get anything for the Cary Beach water quality from the state? Is there any?
The study, a part of the study for the Cary Beach in here is always gonna be looking at grant money. So, uh, but when we complete the watershed management plan for, for, uh, Winter Harbor, we can then apply to get the grants, which are 75, and that's what Lake Wentworth has done. Lake Wentworth's working on their third or fourth one now. So once we get this study done, the plan done, then you can qualify for the federal grants, and that's what the intent is.
So that's the start of getting the grants for Cary Beach, that 50,000?
The 15,000 here, that's the plan.
I'm talking about Article 22, where you got to do some work.
That 50,000 is a study. We're also gonna be looking at what we need to do to solve the problem or mitigate the problem.
Okay.
And then look for additional money for that. That, they may come together. So we may be able to get a grant from 319 to do the Cary Beach problem. We don't know yet.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, let's go to Article 27, which is the, uh, AFSCME Contract Agreement. To see if the town will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Board of Selectmen and Local Number 534 of the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, AFSCME, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. Uh, 2019 estimated wage increase of $44,569. Benefits increase of $6,142, for a total of $50,711. And further to raise an appropriate sum of $50,711 for the upcoming fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in wages and benefits over those of the appropriation, current staffing levels paid in the previous fiscal year. Estimated tax impact 2019 is 0.026 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen on a vote of five to zero. How many, uh, employees does that affect in the town? Do you have an idea of how many that is?
I wanna say between 30 and 40, but I'm not sure.
Thirty or 40? Okay. Okay, the next one is Article 28, Police Union Contract Agreement. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the town and local Number 39 of the New Hampshire, New England Police Benevolent Association, NEPBA, which calls for the following increases in wages and benefits of the current staffing levels. 2019 estimated increases, wages, $45,681. Benefits, $10,179. Total for 2019 is $55,860. 2020, wages, $48,649. Benefits, $11,021. Total, $59,670. 2021, wages, $49,654. Benefits, $15,333. Total, 2021, $64,987. 2022, wages, $47,173. Benefits, $14,418. Total for 2022, $61,590. And further to raise an appropriate sum of $55,860 for the upcoming fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable, attributable to the increase in wages and benefits over those of the appropriation, the current staffing levels paid in the prior fiscal year. I've just got a general question for, just for the Finance Director. What is the difference? We have on the AFSCME contract, it's 30 or 40 employees, and their benefits are only $6,142 for 2019. And then I look at the police union contract, which I take is a smaller number of employees, and their benefits are almost $4,000 more than those other 30 employees. Why is that?
Probably a large portion of that is New Hampshire retirement. So the percentage, uh, for the different groups is, is quite different. Um, the, yeah, okay.
So when we're talking benefits, we're not talking about health insurance or all that other stuff? We're talking, that's not included in that, the health?
Right. The benefits on here include, um, New Hampshire retirement, and then taxes and workers' comp insurance.
Okay. So in, in 2020, when we do the budget, if our fortune still be here, we should see an increase of $48,649. That's it on the police, on the police side?
On the wages.
On the wages.
Yes. Um, except, well, for the union employees. If there's any non-union employees, you, I don't, you'll have to speak to Chief Rondo about that, how's that comes. But this is for the union employees.
Okay.
The, the only other thing would be if biannually, when the, this New Hampshire retirement system revisits their rates, if there's any changes in the rates, you might see a change based on that.
Is that in the, is that in the contract?
They do it every two years.
No, but is that in the contract? In the union contract?
And I don't know.
It's in the benefit line, and when the rates go up, it, it's, it's mandatory, so.
So that's passed on to the town also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, how about the other, uh, health insurance and all that? Who absorbs? If it goes, do they always pay the 15 to 20% or whatever percentage they pay for the entire life of the contract?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have questions? No. Okay, so, uh, let's move to a special detail fund that has nothing to do with us. Uh, library to expand gift proceeds, nothing. Guess that's it for warrant articles. Okay, sure.
Just real quickly, I understand this is an ongoing project, upgrading the, uh, the power distribution lines, and this article, uh, addresses, uh, what you're gonna do, and it's titled Forest Road and North Main Street. Uh, can you just explain for, uh, as a reminder, uh, as to how the town benefits from this project?
Yeah, we started, we started these conversion projects based on a system study completed in 2003. So this, and as you recall, we've done four of these over the, over the past 15 years or so, and this is the, uh, final phase of that. So this is, uh, we're upgrading our voltage. These areas are still operating at the lower 4KV voltage. It's been around since the 60s. And because of that, we've had voltage issues in those areas. We have much higher loads because of the lower voltage. It's also replacing a substation that's at its, end of its useful life, um, just based on age. So by doing this, we'll, we'll lower our amperage in these areas by two-thirds, and therefore, it'll be much more manageable, and certainly a, a much better voltage performance.
More stable voltage.
Certainly more stable, yeah. That's, that's the whole idea, doing these conversions. When we have heavy loads in the summer, we'll see the voltages dip. Forest Road and North Main Street area because of it. This will eliminate that, that fluctuation in load and voltage, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Matt Sullivan just approached me, and he strongly recommended that you do review 29 and 30 for voting.
For what's that again? I'm sorry.
He strongly recommended that you visit Articles 29 and 30 prior to voting.
Okay. Okay, Article, uh, 29 is a special detail fund. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $52,721, which represents a portion of the accumulated revenue in the special detail revolving fund created by Article 23 in 2006, which has been allowed to accumulate from special details in prior years. Said appropriation will be used to purchase replacement cruiser and to allow the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the existing cruiser by sale or trade, which is ever, is of the best interest of the town. This has no tax impact, and it's recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of four to zero. How much should be left in that fund? Do you have an idea?
Right now, it's, it hovers at about 60.
How much?
60.
Six zero?
Mm-hmm.
So, once this cruiser is bought, what's gonna happen to this fund?
Well, the detail revolving fund will, will always continue to, you know, there'll always be ins and outs, costs and income from that.
What do you mean by ins and outs? Is it gonna be ins and outs towards replacing the, the salary that the town play, pays for the folks to do the details?
That's right.
That's what it's actually gonna do, then?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Okay. It hasn't been doing that, though, for the past... Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Just a clarification. It's going to involve the turning in of a current vehicle, which we presently have. What happens to the, to that amount of money? Is that subtracted from the purchase price, or is that going to the replacement into the special detail fund?
Gentlemen, I'm sorry. I apologize. I can't, I can't hear in the back. If you could repeat your question, sir.
Well, it's just, it's a question of the amount, because it says you're going to be purchasing a vehicle for $52,000, which is what has been quoted to us in the past as the cost of a new police cruiser. But it also says you're going to be turning in a vehicle, and you'll receive some money back from that. Is that subtracted from the total purchase price, or does that money go back into the general special detail fund? It's just a question.
Yeah, so I, the bottom line is, if we get anything for the cruiser, it'll, you know, the, because there's two of them are deadlined.
Right.
Right, they're non-serviceable.
I was wondering why it was just one that was...
Well, because we're only, we're only swapping one out.
Okay, all right.
If I can get them to take two, I'll get them to take two, if they give me anything for them. Hopefully, it doesn't cost me anything to get rid of them. But, but hopefully, what we can do is say, listen, if you give me $1,000 for, for one cruiser, drop my price down.
That's, that's...
By, by a grand on, on the replacement cruiser.
That pretty much answers what I was trying to get to.
Thank you, Chief. Hold on, Chief.
Yeah, was it this?
Pardon?
This is to replace an existing operating cruiser that's operating now? Is that what you're going to do?
No, 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 I have two, two deadline cruisers.
That's right.
Right? So what the plan is, to, to essentially get rid of them. But they still have value, I think. They still have value. I don't know what their value is. I'm hoping I'll get $1,000 for each of them. But I don't know. Maybe I'll only get 500. But we won't know that until April, when we, we move forward with our purchase. But if I can get $1,000, I'll get the vendor to, to sell me the cruiser for $1,000 less. I'll give him the junk cruiser, so to speak, and then...
We had a fire chief here a couple decades ago, and I asked a question, and it only required a yes or no answer. He was on his way to a 10-minute response, and we stopped him. My question was, it's very simple, you're going to get rid of one of the deadline cruisers?
Yes, we're going to get rid of one of the deadline cruisers.
Okay, how about the other one?
We're going to look to get rid of that one as well.
At the same time? Because you, right now, you've got a backyard junkyard, car junkyard.
That's, that's right. And it's, and you know what, John, it's going to increase by another two this year.
Okay, thank you. That's, I just wondered if you're going to get rid of the two, that's all. I've got my answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay, we're all set on Article 29. Article 30, Library to Expend Gift Proceeds. To see if the town will authorize the Wolfburg Public Library Board of Trustees to expend the funding representing a gift to the library from Betty Jane Schroth, revocable trust, in the amount of $118,463.1, which is received in 2018. No tax impact, recommended by the Board of Selectmen in a vote of four to zero.
Quick question. Is this going to go to the expansion?
The, the plan is, basically, this, this was unexpected funds that we received from Betty Jane Schroth after she passed away. And the plan that the trustees are talking about is using it to furnish the children's room and buy other furniture for the library project.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, we've covered all the warrant articles that we need to take care of.
We're good.
Okay. Okay, I show that, at the current time, we've added $500, so the budget now should stand at $27 million, $893,891. Is that what you have?
What did you have?
I have $27 million, $893,891.
That's where we are before the $500.
No. You are at $27 million, $893,000.
Oh, yes, okay. You're right. Yep, you're right.
So it's $27 million, $893,891. Okay, that's where we currently stand on the 2019 budget. Okay, does anyone in the audience have any suggestions, complaints? Any department head that can't do their job with the budget they currently have, being provided, being asked by? Anyone's happy? Good, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I especially want to thank you've been so good the past couple of months, and now it's just, boy, I forget what I'm saying. I just want to thank the town manager and Debbie Zabka for her help on doing the work in the budgets, all the department heads, the Selectmen's representative, Paul O'Brien, and everyone else that's put up with our questions and taking times away from the family to come here and answer our questions. So I guess if there's no public input, we'll adjourn the section for the public input, and then we'll go through the warrant articles and vote as a committee on whether to recommend or not recommend. Also, Mr. Pinio, Chief Pinio, could we make some of these documents available downstairs for the public if they want a slide presentation? And also the warrant articles? Would that be possible?
We can certainly work on that, yes.
You know what? At one time, we had a, one of our budget books over to the town library, and, but I guess the town library is closed for the next couple of weeks, two weeks. Would it be possible to maybe just have your copy available if someone wanted to take a...
It's already done by Deb Zabka and Amy Muccio. It's already put together, and it's in the front office.
Okay, so the public can get the copy, the entire budget, and they can also get the slide presentation if they...
Yeah, we'll, we'll put, put the rest of this together, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, can you get a motion to adjourn from the...
Move.
Let me finish, I got to say, guys, please. Adjourn from the public input from the public hearing to vote on the warrant articles. Is there a second? Are all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'm not going to read them again. I'm just going to refer to, if anyone has an issue with me, wants me to read them, I can. But I'm going to refer to the particular article by the article number, and then the heading for the article. And what we'll need from one of you folks is either a motion to recommend or a motion to not recommend, okay? So let's go to Article 11. Yeah, we're going to do a roll call vote also, yeah. You'll do that? You'll call out the names? Excellent. No? Goodness gracious. Okay, it's going to be a roll call vote also, folks, okay? We're going to do electrical distribution conversion phase number five, new 12.47 KV substation distribution conversion from 4KV to 12.47 KV, Forest Road and North Main Street. Any motions concerning this Article 11?
Motion.
Okay. Motion to recommend? Yeah, is there a second? Any further discussion? Okay. So the motion is to recommend, and this is Article 11, electrical distribution conversion phase number five, 12.47 KV substation distribution conversion from 4KV to 12.47 KV. Okay. All those in favor, we're going to do a roll call vote of recommending Article 11. Leanne, you ready? Yeah.
Robert Lohman.
Aye.
Bob O'Brien.
Aye.
Bob O'Hallin.
Aye.
Steve Johnson.
Aye.
John Burt.
Yes.
Donald.
It's the motion to recommend passes. And what was it counting, seven zero? Okay, and the next one is Article 12, Pleasant Valley Road Bridge Construction. Can I get a motion from someone concerning this article?
Move to accept.
A second? So we have a motion to recommend for Article 12, Pleasant Valley Road Bridge Construction. Any discussion? Okay, are those in favor recommending Article 12, Pleasant Valley Road Bridge Construction? Get it?
Robert Lohman.
Aye.
Bob O'Brien.
Aye.
Bob O'Hallin.
Aye.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
Yes.
John McDonald.
Yes. That motion to recommend passes, and I have the count as seven zero. Okay, Article 13, Town Road Upgrades. Can I get a motion concerning this one?
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing then, the motion is to recommend Article 13, Town Road Upgrades.
Robert Lohman.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien.
Aye.
Bob O'Hallin.
Aye.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
No.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Okay, have that as motion passes to recommend, and that's six to one. Okay, the next one is Article 14, The Operating Budget. And that new figure should stand at, should I get the right one here? Okay, can I get a motion to either recommend or not recommend?
Motion to recommend.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the motion is to recommend Article 14, The 2019 Operating Budget.
Robert Lohman.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien.
Aye.
Bob O'Hallin.
Aye.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
No.
Six to one. Okay, Article 15, Dockside Public Restroom Improvements. Can I get a motion concerning this one?
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the motion is to recommend Article 15, Dockside Public Restrooms Improvements.
Robert Lohman.
No.
Bob O'Brien.
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin.
No.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
Yes.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Five to two, yeah. Okay, the motion to recommend Article 15 passes. Article 16, Affluent Disposal Pilot Study. Can I get a motion concerning this article?
So move to accept.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing then, the motion to recommend Article 16, Affluent Disposal Pilot Study.
Robert Lohman.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien.
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
Yes.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes to recommend Article 16. Article 17, which is the Living Museum Feasibility Study and Final Design. Can I get a motion either to recommend or not recommend?
Move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing then, the motion to recommend for Article 17, Living Museum Feasibility Study and Final Design.
Robert Lohman.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien.
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
No.
John McDonald.
Six to one. Motion to recommend passes. Article 18, Fire Trucks and Apparatus Replacement Capital Reserve Fund. Can I get a motion either to recommend or not recommend?
Motion to recommend.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing then, the motion is to recommend Article 18, Fire Trucks and Apparatus Replacement Capital Reserve.
Robert Lohman.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien.
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
Yes.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Motion to recommend passes, seven to zero. Article 19, Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Any motion either recommend or not recommend?
Recommend.
And a second? Any further discussion? Seeing then, the motion is to recommend Article 19, Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
Robert Lohman.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien.
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
No.
John Burt.
Yes.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Motion to recommend passes, six to one. Article 20, Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Reserve Fund. Can I get a motion either recommend or not recommend?
So move to accept.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Article 20, Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Reserve. The motion is to recommend.
Robert Lohman.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien.
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
John Burt.
No.
John McDonald.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion to recommend passes, six to one. Article 21, Establish Dispatch Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Just a quick question for the chief slash town manager. Can we change any of this wording in this?
Could you repeat that?
Can we change any of the wording in here?
Can you?
I don't think so.
I don't believe so, because the select board approved it the other night, last night, so I believe it's locked as language reads.
I think the only time we can change it is at the press session channel, I'm afraid.
Okay. Okay, I need a, either recommend or not recommend, Article 21, Established Dispatch Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
Move to recommend.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Hey, John, what's your concern?
Well, just, I thought that there'd be an expiration date like they have on the other ones, to have it all done by 2024 or 2022 or whatever.
Make sure that those words, that next year, they want some more. Put in there.
We don't forget.
I won't.
Yeah, I just, if we've got these other ones where they're, they have to expire at a certain date, then I think this is probably, should go down the same, same road as that. I'm going to vote in favor of this article, and hopefully, other folks in the audience will understand that this should maybe be considered. But I think it's, I think it's a needed equipment, but I'm just concerned I don't want it to
Maybe, can I ask the question, when this comes up again next year, which it will, obviously, because we've establishing a capital reserve fund and the approval of funds going in, can that warrant article be amended with the changes that we're talking about here in terms of timeframe for next year's go-round? Yes or no?
Brand-new year, brand-new order, as far as I can...
Brand-new year, brand-new warrant, as far as I can tell.
Well, I guess, I don't think it's going to be a brand-new warrant article because it's... It would have to be amended, can it be? What's the rule, does anybody know?
I think that's something we're probably going to have to research and get a better answer on.
Okay, can we make sure that that happens so that next year, when this comes around, we will have the drop-dead date like we were talking about, 2022?
Yeah, well, the voters, they may say this is the way they want it.
I understand, but I'm just talking about...
Yeah, down the road, yeah.
Next year. I'm just asking if this warrant article can be amended for next year's budget process.
You know, it may happen next year, the console may be falling apart, and he needs all the money to buy it, you know, who knows? You know?
Failing that, then we can put in the language that we're talking about.
Yeah, right.
Cut off.
Okay. John, do you have something?
My only question.
Excuse me, there's an opportunity to make a change. This year, at the first deliberative session, it can be done then. Now, next year, if it's written in the same way, essentially, is this to not establish it, we've already established it. As a selectman, write the warrant article such that we just add the money to what we've already established, and we're in the same bind. It's what we feel that we are now. So the only really good, safe way to do it is to make a change at the deliberative session this year.
And that could be done? I get shaking heads over here, and I get a yes over here, I mean...
It can be done.
Okay, the question is, can a member of the budget committee do that, or does it have to come from the public?
Remember the public.
Okay, okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay, fine, we'll deal with it then.
I think the big thing is that they need this, and, you know, whether the wording's changed or not, we should support it, that's just my own, you know...
Senator, I agree with you, if there's an opportunity to change it at the deliberative session, then fine, I'm okay with it.
Leanne, please tell me that we have a motion to recommend already down in this. Okay, excellent.
Ready?
Yep, okay, let me just clarify, it's been a couple of minutes. Okay, Article 21, To Establish Dispatch Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, and it's a motion to recommend, okay?
Okay. Robert Lohman?
Yes.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
John Burt?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes. Okay, Article 22, that motion passes on Article 21. Article 22, Cary Beach Water Quality Study. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Move to recommend.
And is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, it's a motion to recommend, and that's Article 22, Cary Beach Water Quality Study.
Robert Lohman?
Yes.
Bob O'Brien? Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
No.
John Burt?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Motion passes, six to one. Okay, Article 23, Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. Can I get a motion either to recommend or not recommend this article?
Recommend, not...
Motion is to not recommend. Is there a second? Motion fails. Is there a motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend.
Okay, this is Article 23, Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund.
Robert Lohman?
Yes.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
John Burt?
No.
John McDonald?
Yes. Motion to recommend passes, six to one. Okay, Article 24, Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund. Can I get a motion concerning Article 24?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, it's a motion to recommend, Article 24, Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund.
Robert Lohman?
Yes.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
John Burt?
No.
John McDonald?
Yes.
And Brian Black?
Motion to recommend, Article 24 passes, six to one. Okay, Article 25, Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund. Any motion concerning Article 25?
Move to not recommend.
Okay, the motion is to not recommend, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to not recommend Article 25, Public Safety Building.
Robert Lohman?
Bob O'Brien?
Yes on the motion, yes.
Okay, let me just clarify so everyone understands it. The motion is not recommend, is that instead of it having, it says recommended by both the selectmen, photo, this should be a motion to not recommend.
If I vote yes, I'm not recommending, right?
Right.
Yes.
Bob O'Brien? Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
John Burt?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Brian Black?
So the motion passes, five to two? Okay, Article 25, Public Safety Building Capital Reserve. Motion to not recommend passes, and you have it as five to two. Article 26, Water Quality Improvements. Any motion concerning this one?
Move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Article 26, Water Quality Improvements. The motion is to recommend.
Robert Lohman?
Yes.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
John Burt?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes. Article 26, Water Quality Improvements, that passes as recommend. Article 27, AFSCME Contract Agreement. Can I get a motion concerning that?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have, it's a comment. This is the thing that we, the budget committee has no, doesn't get to express itself whatsoever, so I don't agree with the fact that we have to vote yea or nay of this, or approve it, or give our stamp of approval. That's just my opinion.
Why do you think that we don't have any control over that?
Just by what you said at the beginning of this session, John, any of the discussions about salaries and everything is beyond our control. We have no say whatsoever, so when we're presented with a budget, if there are a 2% or 1% or whatever it is increase, we have no input on that discussion or any of those discussions.
Right, we have, we have no input as far as what the town manager or whoever represents the town.
Correct.
The only input that we have is by voting to recommend this or voting against it, either as voters or as members of the budget committee.
And where I personally haven't had any input into that, I don't want to recommend anything that I haven't had input or discussion on.
Okay.
You'll have to abstain, I think, Steve.
Then I'll abstain.
I think that's sort of a fun... I agree with you.
Because we, it's, that's my opinion.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend AFSCME contract.
Robert Lohman?
Abstain.
What?
Abstain.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
No, or abstain, whatever it is.
No, or abstain.
Well, which one do you guys want to have, abstain or no?
No.
Abstain, if I hear.
Then make mine no.
No, okay.
Abstain.
So Robert Lohman is no, Steve Johnson is abstaining?
Yes. Did you ask me?
No, I'm asking, clear.
Well, it's just, we're going to have to show, it's seven to zero, five to two, or I don't know how we're going to put abstain in there, you know? Who you want, Steve?
Steve. Robert Lohman is a no.
Then I'll say no.
Okay.
John McDonald?
You got John Burt, he's also?
John Burt?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Okay, that one, to recommend, Article 27 passes. Yeah, five to two.
This is the one I don't like.
Article 28, Police Union Contract Agreement. Motion to recommend, a motion not to recommend, or what's your pleasure, John?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Robert Lohman?
I want to say something. I don't like, I personally don't like to have commitments for such a long period of time as one, two, maybe four years. I am going to support it, but I think four years is the lock and change in the matter of, four years as far as the economy and other things. Okay, that's it, that's all I got to say.
Robert Lohman?
I repeat, no.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
No.
John Burt?
No.
John McDonald?
Yes.
And Brian Black?
Let's go for a count. To recommend?
To recommend.
Article 28 is recommend, four to three. Article 29, Special Detail Fund. Any motion concerning that?
I have a motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is to recommend Article 29, Special Detail Fund.
Robert Lohman?
Yes.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
John Burt?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Article 29, Special Detail Fund, recommend passes, seven to zero. Article 30, Library to Expend Gift Proceeds. Can I get a motion concerning that?
Move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing then, it's Article 30, Library to Expend Gift Proceeds, recommend.
Robert Lohman?
Yes.
Bob O'Brien?
Yes.
Bob O'Hallin?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
John Burt?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes. Motion to recommend passes, seven to zero. And that's all I can find. Anyone else have anything else? Okay. Does the Finance Director have anything?
No, I think we're good, thank you.
Does the Acting Town Manager have anything?
I just would like to thank you, gentlemen, and also all the department heads for their hard work in putting this together.
Does the Selectment Representative have anything?
Mr. Chairman and everybody, thank you very much. It was a learning experience, and I mean that very sincerely and professionally, it was a good learning experience. Thanks for what you did, appreciate it.
We appreciate your contributions to this job. Okay, so just as a general announcement, when is deliberative session? February 5th, here at the...
At seven?
At seven o'clock, here at the town hall upstairs. And if anyone wants to review any of the documents that we've had tonight, you can get these at the town office, and also a copy of the, or you can have available a copy of the 2019 budget. Okay, I want to thank everybody for the hard work this year, and wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I guess we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.